Yes, thank you. I did, I have it. Sorry. I have it, I printed it. Yep.
Okay, well, we'll call the regular meeting of the Planning, Programming and Zoning Commission of the City of Waterloo to order. It's about 4:03 PM. First item is the approval of the October 3, 2017 Agenda. There are no changes to it, we'll entertain a motion for its approval.
Second.
Moved and seconded, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Chair votes aye, opposed. Okay, the next item is the approval of the minutes of the regular meeting of September 12, 2017. Those were sent out to you in your packets.
Um, I do have a question. Marcia, your name was misspelled a few times.
Oh, I know. An extra "an" on there, I'm not worried about that.
Okay.
I do have one thing on this, and it's not a big deal, but under, under Part III Financial Report, it says that Flynn questioned what that sale of the property was, but that was me.
Okay.
Other than that, I didn't, that's it.
I'll make a motion to approve the minutes with the two items noted.
Second.
Moved and seconded, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
And the chair votes aye. Actually, should I abstain? I wasn't there.
You don't need to.
Okay. All right. Moving on, financial report of August 2017. Mr. Schrader, would you like to address that?
This is Schrader with staff. This is financial report through the end of August, which would be 25% of the year. So, looking down through, generally, things should be around 25%. Certain expenses come in, in advance, so they're not always right aligned with that 25%. Having expenses low is always a good thing, and revenues, kind of the same thing. Certain revenues, you're gonna, um, they're, they're not necessarily, you know, tied down to a specific timeframe, so they may not always be, but generally speaking, I would say the budget looks in order.
Okay, are there any questions? Okay. Moving on, our next item is oral presentations. This is a time when anyone in the room may address the commission on items that are not on today's agenda. So if there's anybody that would like to do that, please come forward, give us your name and address, and a brief description of what you'd like to talk about. Okay, seeing no one, move on to agenda items. The first item is the hearing for a site plan amendment. It is a request by Standard Distribution Company Incorporated for a site plan amendment to the M-2P Planned Industrial District, to allow for the construction of a 200 by 250-foot, 50,000-square-foot industrial building located at 2802 to 2850 Livingston Lane, just southwest of the Waterloo Regional Airport. It's now 4:05, and we'll declare this meeting open, but before we go any further, we need to read the statement. This is on the request, as I stated, by Standard Distribution Company for a site plan amendment, as previously stated. At this time, we should receive and place on file a statement of verification signed by Patty McGee stating, "I, Patty McGee, do hereby certify that a copy of the attached letter, drawings, aerial photo and site plan were mailed to each individual on the attached list by regular mail on September 22, 2017." Do we have a motion to receive and place this notice on file?
So moved.
Second.
Okay, moved and seconded, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay. Of those of you who wish to speak for or against this request, we'd ask that you come to the microphone, but first, we're gonna have a staff report.
This is Andero with staff. It's a request by Standard Distribution Company for site plan amendment to the M-2P Planned Industrial District to construct a 50,000-square-foot industrial building with a 26-acre lay-down yard located just southwest of the Waterloo Regional Airport. The applicant's Standard Distribution Company, 1109 Viking Road, Cedar Falls. The request would not appear to have a negative impact upon the surrounding neighborhood or land use. The area is mostly comprised of light industrial development, and the new building and railroad yard would appear to be in character with that. Request would not appear to have a negative impact on vehicular and pedestrian traffic movements in the area. The area is served by Leversey Road, which is classified as a collector's street, and also Highway 218 is not far from the site in question, is classified as a principal arterial. Area is zone M-2P Planned Industrial District, has been zoned as such since March 13, 1995. Surrounding land uses and their zonings are as follows: To the north, vacant development ground and the Waterloo Regional Airport, zoned M-2P. South, existing industrial development, zoned M-1. East is vacant development ground and the airport, zoned M-2P. And west is Leversey Road and the city of Cedar Falls, zoned M-1 Light Industrial District. No portion of the property is located within a special flood hazard area. There is a 12-inch sanitary sewer line located in West Airline Highway to the south at its intersection with Leversey Road. There's also a 12-inch water main in Leversey Road that stops at the south side of the railroad tracks, and is planned to extend that line to service the new development. The proposed structure is 200 by 250 feet, 50,000 square feet, and is situated southwest of the Waterloo Regional Airport. There'll be a 26-acre lay-down yard surrounding the proposed building with multiple rail spurs and a future lay-down yard of 10.55 acres in the future. Parking requirements for a warehouse is one space for each two persons employed on the premises. At this time, is not knowing how many employees will be at the warehouse, however, with the 26-acre lay-down yard, there appears to be a sufficient amount of space for any potential parking. The parking shall be laid out and organized and informed to facilitate proper traffic flow and movements, and should be noted that all vehicular use areas and driveways shall be properly paved with either concrete or asphalt. So, just to clarify, we have it listed on, as the airports address. However, this land is gonna be parceled off, and the new building would be addressed off Leversey Road, just to avoid any confusion on that, so... But no address has been assigned to the new building yet. So, any questions?
This is Do Not. Refresh my memory about what a lay-down yard is.
I believe it's for outside storage, for any of the materials that Standard Distribution handles.
Okay. Thank you.
This is Wilbur. With the extension of the sanitary sewer line and, um...
Water.
And, and the water, are there gonna be any issues with the railroad in terms of, will that be crossing?
They, they have to work with the railroad in order to get a crossing, cross through a right-of-way. Sometimes that can take a while, so...
They don't, they anticipate being able to get the lines across, it's just the process working with the railroad.
Any other questions for staff? Thank you. Anyone in the audience that would like to address this issue, please come to the microphone and give us your name, address, and make your statement. Okay, seeing no one, we'll entertain a motion to close the hearing.
So moved.
Second.
Moved and seconded to close the hearing, it's 4:10 PM. Vote.
Vote on it?
Yeah, yes, we need to vote on that. Thank you.
Who was the motion, Eric?
I've motioned to close the hearing.
We just closed the hearing, yeah.
We didn't.
Then we need to vote.
We didn't move to vote on it yet.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Chair, all opposed, say aye, sign. Chair votes in favor, so, it's closed. Okay. But we have the recommendation from staff. Discussion amongst the commissioners, or a motion, or...
I, this is Flynn, and I just noticed that, that Engineering Department had questioned as far as the lay-down area being paved or not, and so, will all those details be more explained to us when the site plan comes, or...
Yeah, at the tech, Engineering just wanted to note that the storage area would not require to be hard-surfaced, but any area that is considered a vehicular use area or parking would need to be, and their current site plan does not delineate that. So we have asked that they provide us an updated site plan that will delineate that.
So, the condition noted by staff, is that gonna, that'll encompass?
That'll cover that, yeah. Yep, absolutely.
Yeah, that's got parking in it.
This is Mihai, I'll make a motion to approve the site plan for the, uh, site plan amendment and the M-2P Planned Industrial District to allow the construction of the 50,000-square-foot building with the, for the following reasons. The request would appear to be compatible with the surrounding area, which is primarily comprised of light industrial development. Number two, the request would not appear to have a negative impact upon the surrounding area. Item three, the request would not appear to have a negative impact upon vehicular and pedestrian traffic in the area. Item four, the request is in conformance with the future land use map and comprehensive plan for this area, which designates it as industrial, subject to the following condition: That the site plan meets all applicable city codes, including but not limited to parking, landscaping, drainage, et cetera, except as specifically altered by approval of the site plan amendment.
Second.
Moved and seconded, any further discussion? If not, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Chair votes in favor. Okay, thank you. Moving on to special permits. A request by Zion Lutheran Church for a special permit for the construction of a 10-by-14, 140-square-foot shed with vertical steel siding within a R1, one and two-family residence district located at 810 Kimball Avenue. Staff report.
This is Dornoff with staff. The applicant is requesting a special permit to allow a 140-square-foot shed, church property located 18, 1810 Kimball Avenue, using vertical metal siding. The request appear, appear to have a negative impact upon the surrounding area. The property in question is Zone R1, one and two-family residence district, has been zoned as such since the adoption of zoning ordinance in 1969. Surrounding land uses and zoning are as follows: To the north, residential and convenience stores, zoned R2, one and two-family residence district, and C2, commercial district. To the south, residential, zoned R1 and R2, one and two-family residence district. East, residential districts, zoned R2, one and two-family residence district, and west, residential, zoned R1, one and two-family residence district. The area consists mostly of residential buildings built between 1911 and 1939, and commercial buildings built between 1970 and 2007. There would not be any screening requirements for the fulfillment, although the requests, if the request were to be approved, including allowing the use of vertical metal siding, additional screening requires may be needed to be considered as part of the condition of approval. Though a future land use map designates this area as low-density residential, the special permit would be in conformance with this future land use map and comprehensive plan for this area. The zoning ordinance requires that religious facilities obtain a special permit issued by the Port of Adjustments after a recommendation from the Planning and Zoning Commission for its construction of any structures. This is due in part to the ability to develop and many zoning classifications, as well as the impacts that such a development can have on public infrastructures, such as traffic sewer, et cetera. The ordinance allows for minor changes that do not, do not substantially alter the character of the special permit to be administratively reviewed. The applicant was informed that the shed could be concerned minor administratively approved, it's citing, you know, residentially compatible siding instead of the vertical metal siding it currently has. Staff is concerned that the siding material is not in character with the property in question or the surrounding residential neighborhood. The applicant is requesting a special permit for a 10-by-14, 140-square-foot shed on his property located on the west side of property. The applicant is requesting the shed be allowed to have, for, have metal siding, however, zoning code specifies accessory structures shall not be constructed of metal materials for exterior siding, except for horizontal aluminum steel siding common on the residential structures. The shed is not accessory to residential use, but as a special permit used permitted in a residential area, residentially compatible design should be adhered to. The shed is located on a landscaped area north of the parking lot, west of the church building, so no parking spaces were lost in order to allow the shed. Therefore, staff would recommend the request for a special permit to allow the shed with vertical metal siding be located at 1810 Kimball Avenue be denied for the following reasons. The request would not appear to have a negative, the request would appear to have a negative impact on, and be incompatible with the residential area. The request would be set precedent in allowing other accessory structures of residential areas to have vertical metal siding. The applicant would appear to have other siding alternatives, which would make it compatible with the residential area. However, staff recommends that this special permit to allow a shed with siding common to residential structures be located at the property at 1810 Kimball Avenue be approved for the following reasons. The request would not, would be in conformance with the comprehensive plan and future land use map for the area. The request would not appear to have a negative impact upon surrounding areas. The request would not appear to have a negative impact upon pedestrian or vehicle conditions in the area.
Other questions for staff?
What is, um, this is Do Not. What is the concern about what material that the shed is made of on, on either side, whether it's residential and it conforms with the aesthetics of the neighborhood, to have it in one material, or whether it had the metal siding? You know, what is the importance about the, the type of material that's used on the outside of the shed?
They want to have something that looks like it fits into the neighborhood, it doesn't stick out.
Okay.
This is Flynn. Is it, the pictures were seen here, is there one already there, or this is the one we're approving?
This is the one, yeah.
So it's already built and there?
Yes.
Correct.
So how was this brought to our attention, that it was out of compliance by a neighbor, or?
Yes.
Complaint, yeah.
Yeah, there was a complaint.
Yeah, complaint.
And so, I'm sorry, this is Wilbur. So if, if the material, if it were metal, but just going horizontal, there wouldn't be an issue?
Right.
No.
Okay.
It has to be, it can be metal, but it has to be metal that is considered common on residential siding. So we do not allow what is, you know, common vertical metal siding, oftentimes referred to as ribbed panel siding, to just be turned on its side, because that is not common on residential structures. You don't see people taking ribbed panel siding and turning it sideways and siding their homes with it. The reason the wording is the way that it is is because there are some metal siding that, that is common on residential structures, but there, there's a significant difference in their appearance to the ribbed metal siding that's on this particular shed. It's still, it's, you know, it's designed to, what metal siding is out there that is used on residential structures is designed to look like regular residential siding.
Okay, and this is Butch, and I have a question about this too. If we look at the bottom picture on page 26 on the right, this looks like the back of the church, which I'm thinking probably the reason they did that is because, if you notice, there's up and down, I don't know if that's metal, or what kind of...
Wood.
Is it wood?
Wood.
But, but it looks similar to the church, and I'm kinda wondering if that's why they did it, maybe somebody can address that.
They call it board and bat and siding on the, on the church.
Okay. It's behind a fence also.
Yeah, well, part of it is. A four-foot fence. Yeah. Well, I'm assuming it's four-foot, I don't know the exact height of the fence, but...
I mean, it's, yeah, it's not the full, it's not covering it all, but, okay.
So this is Flynn, so what we're basically looking at is having, asking a non-profit church to remove the current exterior on a shed, and placing what the city would consider alternatives to that siding? I mean, the homes, a lot of those on Grace Line are stucco or, or brick, or not many wood homes in that area anywhere.
Correct.
So what are the options that they could use?
This is Schrader with staff. There's probably quite a few options, but a vinyl siding, I think some form of wood siding that mimics the appearance of the exterior of the church would certainly be a good option as well, making it fit in with the neighborhood. I think there's some other, you know, products out there as well, that are basically kind of either, you know, standard board design or standard vinyl-type material design.
So, are you, okay, so this is Butch again. So the, is the person here?
Applicant.
The applicant here that, that had the concern about it?
Or, not sure if the person is...
Well, I don't know if that's...
The applicant's here, I'm not sure if the person that concerns is here.
Okay, that's...
If I have a concern, does, does the person put the shed there?
Well, I'm, what I'm, what I'm asking is the person that literally, that turned it in, if that person is here.
No.
Okay.
I have a question. It looks like from, from the picture in the upper right on page 26, it looks like it's not on a permanent foundation.
Correct.
Does that matter?
That would be a building code question. I, I'm not sure if they, if they have to put any sort of foundation to it or not.
I, I did drive by the property, and I couldn't tell for sure because of the fence, but when I look at this picture, um...
Let me ask if the applicant, you know, are you able to come to the podium, and...
Sure.
My question would be is, you know, have you heard of the two recommendations from the city, and do you have a, you know, any feedback as to, do you have alternatives for residential style?
Well, can I show you pictures of what the shed looks like? It's not a junky-looking shed.
We have, we have them up here.
Oh, okay, all right.
Yeah.
I mean, it could be a, a shed that we never paint, and it could ruin the neighborhood look, but it, it matches the church, it has vertical siding, just like the church does. It's made out of a nice steel material. It wasn't done cheaply. But to, what I would have to do is tear the siding back off of it, and try to sell it back to the guy that built it for me here in Waterloo. With that fence, half of it is covered up. Don't see much of it, it's on the backside of the building. I mean, we also own the property across Fourth Street, used to be the headhunter, if anybody's familiar with that. Is that zoned commercial, where we could move it over there and sit it in that parking lot?
I would think that is.
This is Schrader with staff. We would have to look at that. I would suspect not, even if it was zoned commercial, it would still be a special permit used, so you'd still have to come back before, through this process, and then if you're talking about sticking it in the parking lot, then an analysis of parking stalls, and if you're going deficient on the number of required parking stalls.
Well, that's what we liked about this location, it's basically hidden. I've had people go down Grace Lines, they don't even notice it's sitting there. It matches the church, the color of it, the trim, and we put it tucked away behind that fence, and there's a tree on the other side facing Fourth Street, so you really don't see it that well. And it's not a, a piece of aluminum, it's, it's heavy-duty steel. So it's, it's quality, a quality shed.
This is Wilbur. What would be the estimate of having to replace, replace it as recommended?
I don't know. I, I've asked the guy that brought it over and set it up for us, and he said he would work something out with us if we had to, to take all that steel siding back off of it again, and then put plywood on, and we could paint it, or we could put vinyl siding on it, but I guess, you know, I relied on one of my members of my church to tell me that it was okay, so I went, went ahead with this project, and then later I find out it's not okay.
So you guys weren't aware of the zoning ordinance?
No, not aware at all.
Okay.
Or a building permit requirement?
Did they have to get a building permit?
One of my, one of my members came down, and he said, he had it okay, he talked to somebody, and he said it was fine, but maybe he didn't tell them that it was made out of steel. And that might be the, the catch right here. So the building's okay there, it just can't have steel siding on it. Is that correct?
Correct. It also needed a building permit.
Right.
Which it doesn't have.
Right. I mean, we'd like to leave it the way it is, it really does look nice with the church, and it is hidden in the backside of the church, it's not out there for everybody to see.
Wait a second. I thought this was one of those portable-type sheds, that it wasn't...
Portable shed.
That it wasn't something that you build and place. So if it's a portable-type shed that's prefabricated, let's say, there's nothing to build, so why would you need a building permit?
The, um, that's building code, but I'm familiar with that code. The code limits the exemption for what doesn't need a permit to residential structures of under 120 square feet. So number one, this is not considered a residential structure, it's accessory to the church, not a residence. So there is no size limit when it's other than a residential structure. But then even if this was accessory to residence, the limit's 120 square feet. Over 120 square feet needs a building permit, period.
And after the fact, we're okay with getting a delinquent building permit, but our biggest thing is we really like to leave it the way it is, because it is a very quality shed. I mean, it matches the church perfectly.
This is Wilbur. Have you heard of any specific objections or complaints?
No, no, not from anybody. Everybody at my church thinks it's great. We, we had to go through a lot of work just to get the money raised to have that shed, so we can do a better job of maintaining our property on that corner that everybody sees. That's why we wanted the shed, so some of us members could take over the responsibility of taking care of the property, and we can store our lawnmower, weed whacker, snow blower, and that stuff in there. That's why we wanted to put it there in the first place, was to keep the corner looking nice.
Sir, could you, I'm sorry, could you give us your name and address, please?
Dave Hamilton. I live at 1341 Holstein Place.
Okay, thank you. Well, I, I would somewhat disagree with Mr. Hamilton. I drove down Grace Line and actually came down Fourth Street, and that shed sticks out. I, I, it, it's neat-looking, but I don't think it blends in myself. That's my personal opinion.
So if, if...
Others, others may disagree, but I, I think that we've, and I know we've gone over this before, in past years, when I was on Planning and Zoning Commission, that people wanted to put vertical siding on, on their buildings and, and residential area, and it, it just wasn't allowed.
Yeah, another example is the cemetery on West Fourth Street, just north of Highway 20. They've got an existing metal-sided pole building that predated the ordinance, but they proposed to build a, a second facility and asked for metal siding, and were told they couldn't. Went through this special permit process to try and request exception, but it was denied. So they have a vinyl-sided garage next to the vertical metal building.
So now I have a question. This is Do Not. I have a question about the upper-right picture on 26th. And this is not about the shed. This is about the church in the background, where the material, is the material on the church different than what we're talking about with the shed, and that's why that's able to be vertical, because it's a different type of material on the actual church?
Yes.
I believe it's wood.
Yeah.
Okay. Thank you.
Well, this is Flynn, and I, I drive by it every day, and I don't think it looks that bad. I mean, it's, it's a building to put your lawnmower in, and you're, you know what I mean, so I, I guess I would be in agree, disagreement with you that I think it looks bad, and it's unappealing to the neighborhood, that's a busy intersection, and I, I don't think, um, to me, it's that noticeable that it would be out of compliance, but on the other side of that is, that's probably part of the problem, it's in a very visible place, somebody saw it, and it didn't meet the code that they were aware of, and, and hence, this is where we're at now. If this church was in a neighborhood that no one drove by except church members, there probably wouldn't be an issue, but, and I agree that I think the vertical goes with the vertical on the church, but I do understand the ordinance... and I agree that I think the vertical goes with the vertical on the church, but I do understand the ordinance um, with uh, steel in a residential. So I think that's what um, you know, I hate to regulate a nonprofit to spend more money, to raise money from your parishioners to change the siding, but um, according to code, that kind of looks like what it is.
Yeah. Probably should ask if there's anybody else in the room that, that would like to speak for or against this item. Okay, I'll pick up.
That's my point. The people that complained about it, where are they at today? I mean, if it's really that big of an eyesore, why are they not down here today representing the nuisance? Is somebody complaining because at one time or another they want to put a shed or they want to do something in their yard? And they were told they couldn't, so now this is just retaliation. That happens from time to time.
That, that we don't know, but uh, you know, we, we have to go by what the zoning ordinance says, so.
Okay.
Well, this is Butch, and I, again, I feel like Flynn does, that, you know, you hate to have a nonprofit where they've already spent a bunch of money. And to me, when I looked at this this afternoon, the vertical looked just like the church, even though it's a different material. If he puts wood on that, they're gonna have to keep maintaining that and painting that, which could become then an eyesore. Where this way with the heavy steel, to me, is there any way to have a variance on this particular code or whatever?
Well, it doesn't need a variance. It just needs special permit approval. So it, it can be approved as requested. It's just staff is recommending against that approval, but-
Because there was someone that complained that's not here.
Well, and because it's not allowed in residential neighborhood. So it's, if this was a single family home, it would be outright not permitted, and they would have to, their only option would be to ask for a variance, which have been very, you know,
Yeah.
Few and far between variances to the metal siding.
And I understand that. I understand that if it's neighborhood.
Right. So a church is not a residential use, so it's not outright prohibited, but a church is a special permit use. So it has to go through this approval process of which one of the elements of that approval process is design, basically, determining what they can have for exterior siding elements.
So we cannot, under the way this is written right now and presented to us, we cannot vote to leave it the way it is?
No, you can.
Okay.
And this is Wilbur, and I, I agree with Brett, Butch, and um, I think, you know, if, if, if it is that they would go to wood or some other type of material, I mean, the way it's constructed now, I think it looks nice. It might be somewhat out of character, but I think if you go to a different type of material, it might not as look as, look as nice and, you know, potentially the wear and tear would show more. It might be a different color, um.
Well, most, a lot of, a lot of what you see in sheds anymore, and real estate's my business, so I kind of know that. It's, is, is vinyl siding. And that's what, uh, that's what a lot of people are putting on sheds now.
And this is metal siding?
Versus metal siding, yes.
This is steel. Is that not what you said?
This is, th- this is, correct me if I'm wrong, but this is the type of siding you'd put on an agricultural building. I mean, that's what it appears to be to me.
Well.
Well. Here's what I would say. Um, we have two motions in front of us. Uh, based on what the applicant's suggesting that they'd like to leave it the way it is, I'm gonna, I'm gonna make a motion based off of the um, what do I wanna say? The, the top motion? Um, for denial, but we have the opportunity to, maybe a roll call vote for this. So um, I'll make a recommendation that uh, to remake, to the request for the special permit to allow for a shed with ver- vertical metal siding to be located on the property of eight ten Kimball Avenue be denied for the fol- for the following reasons. Uh, request would appear to have a negative impact upon the, upon and being incompatible with the residential area. The request would set precedence for allowing other accessory buildings in residential areas to have vertical metal siding. And the applicant would appear to have other siding alternatives that would be compatible with residential area.
Hey, we have a motion. Do we have a second?
So how do we consider the, oh, this is kind of discussion. Um, how do we consider the bottom part of the motion? I mean, I understand what you do with the top part.
You could put the bottom part in there. I mean, that's the way we set it up, is, is essentially to recommend denial of their request as submitted, but approval of a request if it includes the compatible-
Even a recommendation of denial can be still voted uh, the opposite, correct? And, you know, uh-
Correct.
Right.
So, my thinking was, what's the bottom part? To recommend alternative siding?
Correct.
I guess my question for the applicant, this is Flynn again, what would be a ballpark figure if you, I mean, would that be a good compromise if the building could stay there, but you'd have to change the exterior? Would that be a compromise that, that you could accept? Thank you.
Cause I think that's what people are saying, is like, change the exterior, but you can have the shed. I don't, does anybody say just get rid of the shed altogether?
Oh.
If I could take this, the steel siding off, put, put on there, I'd have my Sunday school kids who bought paint and paint.
Check with building department.
I guess, this is Wilbur. That's my question, is because right now, it, I, I mean, while it might not be in conformance with the, the neighborhood and um, that's my question. And while I love child, children's art, you know, right now it looks like it's been professionally made versus if, you know, there's plywood put up, or you know, or, you know, versus that option.
Yeah, that, this is Flynn, that it's a good question, because what if they wanted to paint it and then have the kids put their handprints on it or something? Is that acceptable?
If I get buckets of paint and throw it on there, and that would be okay with the neighborhood? Versus what we have now, which is-
I, I think we're getting a little far field here.
But it's possible.
But I don't know how far field that is, because if we're saying paint is your only parameter, wood siding and paint, then-
That's not their only.
I don't have to choose by inside if I don't want to.
Nope.
So, this is Butch, and so we can't vote on just the first half without including the second half. Is that correct? Can we vote on them separately?
Uh, is that what your motion is, Matt?
You know, I can pull my motion if, if uh, there's not a second. Um, I guess we need more discussion, so why don't we start there?
I don't know, I don't know if there was a second. Mine was a question.
There wasn't. There wasn't a second. We know that.
No.
The question is, how, how does this, how does the board wanna vote on this, you know?
Someone can throw out a motion to approve as requested.
Can we vote? Can I move that we vote on the first motion that he put for it?
If you want to second it.
I'll second that.
Okay.
I'll second that.
Okay, so it's been moved and seconded. Let me restate this now, that uh, the request for a special permit to allow for a shed with vertical metal siding to be located on the property at eight ten Kimball Avenue be denied for the following reasons. Request would appear to have a negative impact upon and be incompatible with the residential area. The request would set a precedent for allowing other accessory buildings in residential areas to have vertical metal siding. The applicant would appear to have other siding alternatives that would be compatible with the residential area. Is that correct?
Yep.
What is a denial vote? I mean, I understand what a denial vote is, but if we're, uh, if it passes with the double negative here, if, if, if basically people are approving the way it is, so what, is that, is that the motion that we should be making, or is that the, you know, what's?
I think we have something in the admin rules that uh, address that. I think avoiding the double negative is, is usually preferred, but it doesn't have to be. So if the motion is to deny and that motion fails, it would be considered a recommendation of approval.
Okay.
As requested.
Okay.
Hey, it moved and seconded. I think we'll do a roll call. Um, Butch?
No.
Hehe.
I think, I gotta, I think this thing-
Yes is a vote to deny with the, with the vertical siding.
No.
Do not.
Yes.
Wilbur?
Okay. Say that again, the yes is to?
The yes is to deny the, the request with the vertical siding.
So as it is, right now?
Correct.
A no vote would allow it the way it is?
To stay it is.
Okay, so no.
No.
Flynn, okay. And the chair votes yes. So does that mean then that's, we're, we're recommending that it be, we don't need to vote on the second half?
I don't think you do. I think it's clear what your intent is. Your um, vote is just a recommendation to the Board of Adjustment, so we'll make it you know, clear to the Board of Adjustment what your uh, recommendation is, but you know, that it's a afforded to, a split vote. It'll go on to the Board of Adjustment the fourth Tuesday.
Okay. Alright, thank you.
Thank you, everybody. Thank you for listening to my request.
Okay, uh, next we move on to vacations, or vacates, rather. Request by the city of Waterloo. Request by the city of Waterloo to vacate former West Fourth Street right of way located between Cedar Street and Commercial Street. Staff report.
Okay, yeah, this is Hyburger with the staff report. Uh, the applicant is requesting to vacate a portion of the right of way of West Fourth Street located between Cedar Street and Commercial Street, as the area is no longer needed for public street purposes and is currently being used as a parking lot. The applicant is the city of Waterloo. Uh, the request would not appear to have a negative impact on the surrounding neighborhood or land use. Vacate request would not appear to have a negative impact on vehicular or pedestrian, pedestrian traffic movements in the area, because it, um, it is excess right of way, no longer needed for road purposes. Um, Commercial West Fourth Street and Cedar Street are all classified as local streets. Uh, the nearest recreational trail is the two eighteen trail located along the north side of Highway two eighteen and is eight hundred feet southwest of the proposed vacate area. The area is served extensively by sidewalk. Uh, the area in question has been zoned C three central business district since the adoption of the zoning ordinance in nineteen sixty-nine. Uh, the surrounding land uses to the north, south, east and west are, are all uh, C three central business district, uh, with office buildings. Uh, the surrounding area mostly consists of older office buildings that were primarily constructed between the nineteen thirties and nineteen eighties. Uh, no buffers or landscaping would be required for this request. Uh, the vacate would not appear to have a negative impact upon drainage conditions in the area. The area being vacated is located in a zone X five hundred year flood plain protected by levy as indicated by the Federal um, Insurance Administration's flood rate map. Uh, there are no schools within the immediate vicinity. Uh, the River Loop Expo Plaza is located approximately three blocks to the southwest of the vacate area. Um, an easement will need to be retained over the right of way to be vacated. Uh, there's a thirty inch sewer main in the alley northeast of the vacate area. Uh, Mid-American electrical transmission lines and transformer, a ten inch water line, private services and storm sewer line that crosses the vacate area. Uh, Cedar Street and Commercial Street both contain uh, ten inch storm sewer lines, uh, just past West Fourth Street. Uh, the future land use map design makes this area as commercial. The proposed vacate area would be in conformance with the comprehensive and future land use plan for the area. The applicant is requesting to vacate a portion of West Fourth Street right of way located between Cedar Street, Commercial Street. Uh, the area is the former location where West Fourth Street was located before it was relocated to the southeast. After the road was relocated, the area was left as right of way. Um, but a city owned parking lot was constructed on it. Uh, the area is not needed for public purposes and has potential for redevelopment. Although an easement will need to be retained over the entire vacate area due to multiple utilities within the vacate area. Uh, there's no plotting as a part of this request. Staff recommendation, therefore staff recommends that the portion of West Fourth Street right of way located between Cedar Street and Commercial Street be approved for the following reasons. One, the vacate area would not appear to have a negative impact on the surrounding area, and the right of way does not appear to nee- be needed for any future street purposes. Uh, the request would not appear to have a negative impact upon pedestrian traffic conditions within the surrounding area. The request would not appear to have a negative impact upon drainage conditions in the area. Subject to following condition, that an easement will be retained over the entire right of way area to be vacated. And that's Hyburger with the staff report.
Are there any questions for staff?
Yes, this is Do Not, have, have a question about i- if the vacate is approved, uh, what does the road or area become?
This is Schrader with staff. For the current time period, a parking lot, just like it currently already is. Uh, it, generally speaking, we wouldn't have excess right of way that's not being used for right of way purposes and being put as a parking lot, but when uh, Fourth Street was shifted, uh, relocated over further to the east, the right of way was just never vacated and it was looked as a good location to put a parking lot on. Uh, so for right now, will continue to be a parking lot. It does have potential uh, for redevelopment purposes, but obviously the utilities in there are going to uh, have some effect on that. So probably realistically for it to be redeveloped to other than a parking lot, some of those utilities would have to be relocated. Depending on what they would build where, you know, some utilities might be okay, but some where a potential building would go would need to be relocated. But that's not what the proposal is at this time. We're just basically saying it's not needed for right of way purposes. It's currently being used as a city owned parking lot, and the vacate just kind of clears that up and, you know, makes it potentially that it could be moved forward down the road to be redeveloped, although those easements will still need to be addressed.
Okay, the time being, it's not gonna change anything.
Correct.
Other than the right of way won't be there.
Correct.
I'm not concerned about, um, I'm not concerned about having the easement. I mean, I think the easement needs to be in place for the purposes that you've discussed or you've described, but it just seems to me like a, I don't wanna call it a through road, cause I don't wanna use the wrong term, but a road. I mean, I, I've seen uh, buses and vehicles go in and out of that area, that road, as if it were still a road.
Well, this is Schrader with staff. There's only one driveway in and out of it, so if they're using it as a through road, they're jumping the curb to be able to get there, cause the, what's kind of the north or northeasterly end there along Cedar Street.
I've watched buses struggle to try to even make it back.
Turn around in there.
If you look on-
So maybe I'm referring to a different location then, I think.
Yeah.
If you look on page thirty-one, Do Not, I think you'll see what they're talking about, the easement.
Do not, but that's alright.
Do not, I'm sorry. I, um, on West Fourth, there's one way in and one way out. That's the only way in. And, and it is now a parking lot.
Well, and actually, this is Flynn, that you don't go in off Fourth Street. I work right across the street. You go in off Cedar.
So there is an entrance on Cedar?
Yeah, just Cedar, but there's nothing on Fourth.
Oh, there isn't?
No.
Oh, it shows, it, okay, it looks, it looks like-
I think it's like a sh- different shading of the sidewalk in that stretch.
There's a little bend in the sidewalk.
And there is a bend in the sidewalk.
I guess I have commandos.
That's what makes it look here like there's a drive, but yeah, you're right.
Okay.
It only goes out, yeah.
Okay. So, then I do have a con- my only concern is we're building so many things downtown and we're losing parking spots every time we do that. And when we try to have events, we need to be able to leave this as a parking lot, to my feelings. Because if we leave it open to the fact that a building could be put there, we're losing valuable parking spot. As it is, if you do anything at the convention center, you're scrambling to try and find places.
I think, I think realistically, you aren't gonna find anybody that's gonna wanna go to the expense of moving all the utilities to build a building.
I would hope not. I just don't wanna- I would hope not. I just don't want to.
Yeah, unless it's a skyscraper of some kind or something. Because that's, you know, you could probably get land cheaper than doing that. That's very expensive.
Right.
So I think for all practical purposes, it's going to stay a parking lot.
Right now, isn't the courier, the old courier building for sale anyway?
Yes.
And maybe they would need some of that parking.
And this is Wilbur. That was my question. Is that, I think you'd kind of mentioned something along those lines, but is that the hope that it will make maybe that building or surrounding buildings a little more attractive to?
Yes.
Okay.
Okay, is there anyone in the room that would like to speak either for or against this item? Okay, if there's no further discussion, we'll entertain a motion.
As long as I'm not okaying a building being there, I'll go ahead and move to request to vacate a portion of West Fourth Street right-of-way located between Cedar Street and Commercial Street. And can I, do I have to read all the recommendations or just subject to the following conditions? Is that okay? Subject to the following condition, then an easement will be retained for the entire right-of-way area to be vacated.
Just to be clear, your motion is that the portion of West Fourth Street right-of-way between Cedar and Commercial Streets be approved?
Yes.
Okay, I'm sorry. I didn't hear you say.
Oh, I'm sorry.
You moved approval.
I'm sorry.
Second.
Just, I just wanted to be clear.
I might have missed that.
Moved and seconded. All in favor, if there's no further discussion?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Okay, opposed, same sign. That's carried. Onto the next item, the zoning ordinance amendments. Request by the City of Waterloo for amendment to the zoning ordinance governing salvage yards. And it is the separate handout that was emailed to you that we'll be talking about.
Yeah, this is Schrader with staff. So I did email out and updated proposed amendment. It'd be an email that went out on Friday, September 29th. I think everyone has a hard copy of that in front of them. If not, I've got some extra ones here. Otherwise, as the, you know, proposed ordinance in the email kind of talked about, the primary purpose of this proposed amendment is to incorporate elements of the I-Care program, which is the Iowa Certified Auto Recyclers Environmental Program. Taking some of the environmental-friendly elements required in that program, which is a voluntary program. Establishments choose to, if they want to participate in that I-Care program, taking some of those elements and putting them into the City of Waterloo zoning ordinance as a requirement, and then noting a recommendation, just recommendation, not requirement, that facilities participate in the I-Care program. The other cleanup changes regarding impound lots, as previously was not defined and previously unclear as to whether or not they would fall under the definition of a recycling junk or salvage yard. So this amendment will add a definition of an impound lot and list them as being under the definition of recycling junk or salvage yard, meaning new ones would have to go through the special permit process for salvage yard. Existing ones would not need the special permit process, but would need to start obtaining the annual license. So that's just kind of a brief overview without going into specific details. I think I'll just kind of leave it at that, but I can obviously answer any questions and go over any more of it that's requested in detail. And there are some individuals here that may want to speak on this request as well.
So, this is Butch. So in the email, you mentioned that the minimum lot size would be instead of five acres to four acres. So it's proposed to leave it at five.
Yeah, so in.
But that's, that's just in this first one that you sent us.
Yeah, in the original version that was mailed, it was being proposed to change the minimum lot size for a new salvage yard. It was proposed to lower that from five acres down to four acres. But after further discussion, it was decided that that change should be scrapped. So we're proposing to leave the minimum lot size as it currently is at five acres.
So that part didn't have to be in this amended thing?
Right.
Okay, that was my question on that part.
Eliminated out since it's no longer proposed to be changed.
Any other questions for staff?
I don't think I had a, this is Do Not. I don't think I had a question about the actual changes as described. So I was agreeing with the changes as proposed. But with areas where we have, just in the text of the ordinance change, should we, do we have to spell out? For example, there's a, there's a passage that talks about per Iowa DNR. Okay, we all know what DNR means, but for the, for the purposes of officially writing out the ordinance change, do we need to actually say at Department of Natural Resources?
This is Schrader. I'm going to double check, but I think we define that. So you can abbreviate it elsewhere as long as you have a definition. Yeah, Department of Natural Resources parentheses DNR. Where found in this ordinance pertaining to flood management, this shall mean the Iowa Department of Natural Resources IDNR, the state agency that has underlying floodplain permit authority for the state of Iowa. So that was really kind of put in there for floodplain purposes, but DNR also has the environmental division, so.
Okay, so you can.
I think we're adequately covered in that it's at least clear what DNR or IDNR stands for.
So you can also not worry about other abbreviations of the same type when you're talking about, for example, the Environmental Protection Agency and stuff.
Yeah, generally speaking, when we do an ordinance, if there's going to be a term that gets used a lot, we'll want to define it once and then basically put in parentheses how we're going to abbreviate it thereafter. And then every thereafter, we can just do the abbreviation. That's what we did with the hobby farm, for instance. It's basically, you know, spelled out what an urban animal hobby farm, you know, is first, and then thereafter is just the initials.
Okay.
Any other questions for staff? Okay, if there's, I'm sorry.
No, I'm sorry. Hold on just a minute.
Okay.
There was, in the first section, well, what I'm looking at is page 149 U, in second column. I was thinking when I first read through the first part of this, that it mentioned airbags. I'm not sure where I found that. No, I don't know.
Yeah, that was one of the cleanups, I think, and let's see if.
Is that what it was? Okay, maybe, maybe we don't need to worry about airbags. I don't, I don't remember when I read this first part where I found that.
Try and find it too.
I know.
I think it was referring to like either training or licensing, one or the other. And there was a couple of different sections that had some specific references to like that and forklift training. But we thought kind of, we went with just more of a general must-have current licenses, be up to date on any required training, and follow all applicable state and federal regulations. We kind of thought that more generic wording in V covered it rather than kind of going into the specifics.
Okay. Because I guess on 149 U, in the first one you sent out, it did mention airbags, shipping of airbags.
Yep, yeah, I think forklift, doesn't it, isn't?
And then it talks about forklift training.
Forklift training, yep. So we decided that V was a little more generic and just kind of covered it with a broader, you know, broader brush rather than kind of getting into specifics of airbags and forklifts and stuff like that. But, so U was going to come out, but because we also were adding in a reference to impound, it created a good spot without having to like renumber all of the letters to just stick the impound one in.
All right, and this is new ones.
Good catch though.
Well, I don't know why I even caught that.
Okay, any other comments? There are none. If there's anybody here in the room that would like to speak either for or against this issue, please come forward, give us your name and address, and state your case, please.
I'm Sue Shals. I'm the Executive Director of the Iowa Automotive Recyclers at 2214 Regal Avenue in Waterloo. And I'm the author of the I-Care program, and I conduct the audits. And so obviously, I'm in huge support of the ordinance. And I just had one or two, or is this the final copy? Do you want to talk about technical details or? There was just a, five small things. One, on the Section 8F, you might want to limit secondary containment for two containers, 55-gallon and larger, which would be compatible with Section 8J for the spill prevention control and countermeasure. That's referenced as an Iowa DNR rule, but is actually an EPA rule. And then Section 8L, technician certification is not required for refrigerant removal only, only for refrigerant recharging of an air conditioning system on a motor vehicle. So Section 608 and 609 of the Clean Air Act amendments only require technicians to be certified if they're recharging a motor vehicle air conditioning system or, in the case of Section 608 of the Clean Air Act amendments, it would be if they were purchasing refrigerant R12. So you would want to just strike certification because a regular salvage yard isn't doing any recharging.
So strike the entire proof of technician certification is readily available on site? Is that what you're?
Yeah, because they're not required to be certified if they're just doing a reclamation. Or.
Staff has no concerns with that. So let's back up just to make sure on the other ones.
Yeah.
So under F, you're suggesting?
Under 8F, you might want to clarify that out secondary containment would be for outdoor storage of vessels 55 gallons and larger. That would be compatible with the SPCC rules?
Containers are in excess of, say that one more?
55 gallon, like a 55-gallon drum and larger.
All right, so how about this? If containers are in excess of 55 gallons and stored outdoors, they must have secondary containment.
Perfect.
Proper remark. Sound good?
Yep.
Okay, and so staff has no concerns with that change? And what was the other?
8J, it references the Iowa DNR rule for spill prevention control and countermeasure. I don't believe that Iowa has jurisdiction over any of the RICRA, Resource Conservation Recovery Act rules. So that SPCC rule should be referenced as an EPA rule. It'd be Section 112 of the 40 CFR.
So just instead of per Iowa DNR regulations, make it per EPA regulations?
Correct.
And I'll have to see if we, if we don't, don't know that we define EPA. So if that's the first time it's in the ordinance, I can actually write it out, Environmental Protection Agency.
And then we went over 8L. And then 8Q. So the, just so you know, the 1,500 tire storage in the certification is in agreement we have with the National Auto Recycling Association's Certified Auto Recyclers Program or the CAR program, which I'm also the technical advisor for. It happens to be one semi-trailer load of tires. The Iowa rule allows a licensed recycler to have 3,500 tires on site, which is a lot of tires. And so what you might want to do is keep it to the current city code of no more than 500 tires, exposed tires on site, and up to 1,500 tires, and only if they're racked, caged, stored in a trailer, or otherwise covered. That would virtually eliminate tire piles in the City of Waterloo.
No more than 500?
Exposed.
Exposed tires.
1,500 racked?
And up to 1,500, but only if they are racked, caged, stored in a trailer, or otherwise covered. I emailed that stuff to you, Eric.
Oh, you did? Okay.
So a tire pile of 1,500 is not only really large, but often becomes a attractive place for people to dump their tires unwittingly. And then suddenly, it's 2,000 and then 30,000, you know, like that, so.
And the other thing that is something, you know, that Q was kind of pulled out of the I-Care but tweaked a little bit and kind of being tweaked a little bit more. But that was a spot that I had a little bit of concern on because waste tires are stored, I need to D, by the way, stored on site with at least 50 feet of clearance between tire piles.
And it should be also be in the perimeter of the property or building, yep.
Yeah, that's going to be a dip. I mean, if it's what we want to go for the standard and anyone that doesn't need it now would become grandfathered in, great. It's a pretty tough standard. Some of the yards now, you know, if they were had, if they had to retroactively adhere to that, 50-foot clearance from, you know, piles and the property line and structures on the property, they wouldn't be able to do. So there's a couple of yards that are probably not much more than 100 feet in width so that they literally couldn't get a pile that would be 50 feet from both property lines.
Yeah, the fire marshal actually likes 20. It's in the Iowa Administrative Code 567, Part 118 is the tire rule. So if you wanted to make it doable, and if you're making your piles smaller, 20 is probably adequate with no more than 500 exposed tires.
I like that if there's kind of general.
Sounds good to me.
The fire marshal just likes a 20-foot drive lane, you know? Tires are not actually as big of a fire problem as people think. Their biggest issues are actually mosquitoes.
Oh, because of water.
Because of the water inside.
Yeah.
Yeah.
So you can see we're in the island states and the southern states, they're disallowing piles entirely because of the Zika.
Okay.
And I know that what I suggested is actually a little more stringent than even my own program, which might sound weird, but I think it's best for the city. And then lastly, in Section 8S, it says in compliance with the City of Waterloo Stormwater. And I would suggest that you add "and" in compliance with the Iowa DNR Stormwater General Permit for Industrial Classification 5015 because that's the most stringent rule that the salvage yards have to adhere to, is the Iowa Stormwater Permit.
Say that one more time, "and" the?
And in compliance with the Iowa DNR Stormwater General Permit for Industrial Classification 5015. That would mean that they would have to maintain a stormwater permit with an annual renewal. They would be sampling if they have more than 250 junk cars on their yard. They would be required to do stormwater sampling for the parameters that we have right now in Iowa. And it would also mean that they have to maintain a stormwater pollution prevention plan, which outlays the best management practices that they're adhering to in order to limit exposure of contaminants to stormwater, most of which are in the I-Care program, such as not washing parts outside, not dumping water, not exposing motors to the rainwater, those kind of things.
Are you following all that?
For the most part.
She said she emailed it to you.
She emailed it to you.
She emailed it to you, so this is good.
Thank you for all your knowledge. Technical details are my thing, so.
Oh, boy.
No, thank you for even considering this. I know that, you know, it's been floating around out there for quite a while, so.
This is Wilbur. I have a question. In Section K of that, since we have your expert knowledge here, are there any special considerations that need to be taken into, I mean, consideration when a hybrid battery is being removed that need to be?
Well, I did recently, well, maybe four years ago, write a 400-page guide on the recycling of hybrid vehicles, so I probably can speak to that. It's, you know, the cure for insomnia.
It's, you know, the cure for insomnia. So, all right, lead-acid batteries are in two sections of code. One of them makes them universal waste, and there's a specific section for automotive waste. And hybrid batteries are in a completely different category, okay? So there isn't any specific code for dealing with hybrid batteries, but they also don't have nearly any of the environmental issues of a lead-acid battery, because lead-acid batteries are made up of lead in a sulfuric acid solution, both of which are contaminants to the environment. Where hybrid batteries are made up mostly of lithium ion, or the lesser-used type, which are now regulated as a dangerous good, that's under a DOT regulation, the same one that regulates airbags and their certification for airbag. And the, the, most of the hybrid batteries in use, especially in Iowa, are nickel metal hydride batteries, and so there isn't any wet cell type of component. So as far as environmentally, they're really very environmentally benign, 'cause there isn't really any opportunity. Economically, they're a very high-value product, so there's not likely to be found in the ditches, you know, 'cause people are gonna want their $8,000 out of them, you know, like that. And then, so their biggest concern is actually an OSHA and a DOT concern. The OSHA concern is that they are, you know, a high-voltage battery, and there's a whole series on how to discharge the battery. You actually have to wait 10 minutes for the energy to dissipate, otherwise it could give a lethal electrical shock. And then the DOT comes into play because you need to be warning the shippers that are receiving this product that there's a danger, you know, that if there was a fire in the FedEx truck, you know, it, it could, you know, melt the battery and cause the battery to then conduct electricity, or, you know, something like that, so. So environmentally speaking, it probably not of a huge concern and not of the same nature as lead-acid batteries.
Now, I have a question. This is do not-
Battery 101 today.
My, my original comment for when I sort of interrupted was, I was laughing about not, not including your 400-page document into our code, so that was my joke. But my more serious question was, with all these changes that you're proposing, I, I agree, I'm in agreement with the proposed changes that you're offering, does that delay our vote? Because does the general public need to have a meeting, a time period where they can consider the changes being proposed?
This is Schrader with staff. It would not have to. If the Planning Commission feels uncomfortable taking action on the request with the multiple changes, it certainly could be tabled for a month. There's, there's actually a moratorium in place for new salvage yards that's been in place for a while now, and it's had to be extended a couple of times because of how long it's been taking us to get this amendment finally in front of the Planning and Zoning Commission. And once it's through the commission, it'll have to go on to the City Council for final adoption. That moratorium may have to get extended at least one more time anyway, just based on the timeline of when we could realistically get it to council, even if you act on it today. But otherwise, you would not have to. If you feel comfortable with an understanding of what the changes are, you could still go ahead and, and make a motion. Your action is just a recommendation. The formal hearing where, I mean, obviously, this is a, a public setting as well and public opportunity to speak, but the formal official hearing of anyone that wanted to protest, for instance, the proposed amendment would be before the City Council. And we would obviously have to have a finalized version that they can't change too much on the fly without having to start the process over.
The part, this is Butch, and the part that I'm concerned about if I own the salvage yard, which I don't, is the change in the tire, the 500 exposed and up to 1,500 that have to be caged in trailers or covered with whatever. I don't know, I'm not, my husband goes to salvage yards all the time, I do not, but I wonder if that would be something that salvage yards would need to be concerned with or, you know what I mean?
Excuse me, didn't you say, this is Flynn, that this current salvage yards would be grandfathered in, this would be for only new?
Oh, this is just-
Is that correct? Is that, staff, is that right?
And that gets into a real kind of complicated area as well. So anything that is like a, like a setback requirement or a prohibition on having something that was previously allowed, the zoning ordinance provides for that to be grandfathered in. Wording that talks about requiring compliance with, like licensing or training, things like that, that would not be considered something that would be grandfathered in. So there are essentially parts of this that a existing operator could claim that they are grandfathered from, and parts that they might not be able to. A setback of a pile of tires would definitely be one. If they have historically had a pile of tires here and it's right next to the property line, that would be considered grandfathered in. The number of tires could be as well, if they have historically had, you know, in excess of that number of tires. What you're potentially going to run into some problems in there with is if that changes over time. In other words, if they, for a ti- period of time have no piles of tires, then they've brought themselves into compliance and can't go, you know, back into, you know, out of compliance. So it is a little tricky.
I, I think possibly city of Waterloo has a 500 tire limit right now. Cedar Falls has 400, so there shouldn't be anybody with more than that right now.
I was gonna ask.
And didn't you say that the fire marshal already requires a 20?
20 foot.
20-foot clearance from a perimeter anyway?
Yeah, and a gas tank.
So then that should be already, that part should be taken care of. It's just the change in the tire limits that you were talking about that-
I, if it's true, and I'm sorry, I should have looked this up before I came, if it's true that, that Waterloo has a 500 tire limit anyway, it's possible that saying that you can have up to 1,500 in cages or trailers or covered storage is actually giving them the ability to have a thousand more tires on site.
Right, right. Yeah, that's, if that's what they're at now is 500.
Yeah, and you're talking about waste tires, right? Not ones for resale?
Actually, in 2004, I believe it was, the DNR redefined that even tires on rim count now. The only way that it doesn't count is a waste tire, yes, I am talking about waste tires. The tires have to be racked and rotated, and the, the inventory has to be turned over in a one-year period in order to be considered a used and sellable tire in the state of Iowa.
Okay, I just wanted to make it clear, this is do not. I wanted to make it clear that I was not proposing a propos- a, a postponement of the vote today. I was asking if we were required for, for a period of a public comment period because of the various changes that were being proposed by the presenter, so.
And it would not be required. It could be chosen, but it would not be required.
My purpose actually was just to make sure that it was in line with the Iowa and EPA code and that therefore enforceable.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Is there anyone else in the room that would like to speak either for or against this item? If so, please come forward, give us your name, address, and, and your, your comments. Okay, seeing no one else, we'll entertain a motion, or if there's no further discussion.
I'll make a motion that the changes, that changes to the zoning ordinance be approved as presented at today's meeting in this setting.
Including the changes submitted by Ms. Shaw.
Including the changes proposed by the presenter.
I'll second that.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded. If there's no further, further discussion, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion's carried. Thank you. Discussion items. We've had enough discussion today. Okay, motion for adjournment.
I have a question, quick.
Oh, I'm sorry, go ahead.
And it wasn't really a discussion. I was wondering why the next meeting in November was November 14th instead of-
Election Day is the 7th.
This is Schrader with staff. So the, the meeting in November always used to be on the first Tuesday of the month, which is Election Day. A few, I don't remember exactly when, but a year or two ago, the commission asked for that to be considered, and we amended the administrative rules to note that the November meeting would be moved to the second Tuesday of the month, so it doesn't conflict with Election Day, unless the second Tuesday of the month is a holiday, which every once in a while, it can fall on Veterans Day, and then we really have no other option but to leave the P&amp;Z meeting on the first Tuesday, because it's, it's not necessarily a true confliction with Election Day, I mean, 'cause obviously you can vote from-
Anytime.
You know, like, I don't remember the exact hours, but-
Seven to nine.
Seven to eight or nine PM. So, and sometimes, especially during presidential elections, the Elections Office uses this room, and there's been some conflict there too, so it is, can be helpful based on the, what areas the Elections Office uses here at City Hall, so.
Now, 'cause I remember having this discussion, what was it, 15 or even 16, and we, we were sitting in this room having the meeting, and at the end of the meeting, Tavis and I both kind of said, "Well, get out and vote." So we had the meeting on Election Day.
Yep.
Yeah.
So the change, I can't remember exactly when we changed it, but it was probably fairly shortly thereafter, a year, a year ago.
Yeah, okay.
But I think, this is Flynn, I think it prevent, it doesn't give anyone an excuse to not be part of the political process if they so chose, if they had to come to this meeting to present something, or something that gives them the option that they can participate the next week, so.
And they also have the option to vote absentee.
Right. Okay, thank you.
I'll second your motion.
Thank you.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
We are adjourned. Thank you all for coming.